Do you have a show?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll call to order the July meeting of the Oxford Planning Commission. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Do we have any changes or amendments to the agenda from staff or from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those of you who were here last month, if you had a chance to read the minutes, are there any changes or amendments or additions to the minutes proposed from the June meeting? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I have a motion to approve as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ben, do we have a staff report today?
We do not.
All right. There were two cases that were administratively approved. These were commercial developments that were below the 10,000 square foot minimum to come before the planning commission. Ben, anything to add about those?
Yes, sir.
All right. Our first case then will be public hearing for case number 2876. Vicki Ellis has filed a request for a variance from section 5.5.2.6, fences and exterior yard walls height for property located at 733 Martin Luther King Jr. Circle. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. So, as JR stated, applicant is requesting a two-foot fence height variance, and this is for property located at 733 Martin Luther King Jr. Circle. The subject property is a residential corner lot, and it's located at the intersection of Price Street and Martin Luther King Drive with additional frontage on Martin Luther King Jr. Circle, and the house fronts Martin Luther King Jr. Circle. The applicant would like to construct a six-foot high wooden fence. Proposed fence is a picket style with spacing to allow for visibility. Additionally, it will be set back off the corner at MLK and Price to allow for driving visibility. In reviewing this proposal, the city engineer noted that a city sewer line is located close to the proposed location of the fence, so the applicant plans to have that line located and adjust the location of the fencing accordingly before it's installed. As stated in the Land Development Code's General District Regulations regarding fencing, fences, walls, and hedges may be permitted in any required yard or along the edge of any yard, provided that no fence, wall, or hedge along the side or edge of any yard that fronts the public street shall be over four feet in height. Due to the nature of this corner lot, which by definition consists of three front yards and one side yard, the owner is limited in their ability to reasonably enclose a portion of their property, and they are concerned for privacy and wish to construct a wooden fence higher than what's currently permitted in a front yard by code. As you guys know, a variance request may be granted when special conditions exist that are peculiar to the land or structures that do not apply to other lands or structures in the same districts under the term of the ordinance. So staff is recommending approval of the two-foot height variance with the condition that the fence will be constructed in a manner that the smooth side of the fence will face the public's view, which is required by the Land Development Code, and that the final location of the fencing is acceptable to the city engineer after location of that sewer line, and the homeowner is very willing to work on the proposed location based on where we find out that the sewer line is.
And the sewer line is somewhere on the western boundary of the property?
Yes.
So they just have to move in the fence from the property line closer to the house?
Yep, exactly.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Any questions or comment from the audience? All right. I'll entertain a motion on case number 2876 for a variance from section 5.5.2.6.
I'll move to approve with the recommendations stated.
I have a motion to approve, subject to the staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you put... All right. It is granted, thank you. Our, excuse me, our next case will be public hearing for case number 2869. David Blackburn has filed a request for final plat approval for the Preserve Phase Five for property located on Lakewood Hill Drive.
Okay. This is a request for a large lot subdivision of 11 lots located in the Preserve areas, the Oxford Commons on the north side of the PUD. It adjoins lots in Phase Three of the Preserve to the west, the TVA power line to the east, the high school property to the south, and properties beyond the PUD. I believe most of those are still in accounting to the north. The lots' variance size from about 1.1 acres to 3 and 1/2 acres, and all are considerably larger than the 7,200 square foot minimum lot size of the underlying suburban residential zoning. These lots are, will be close to or surround an existing mine and change acre pond of the property, which will serve as a recreational asset for other portions of Oxford Commons as well. The pond area will include a passive recreational space and a walking trail, including a pathway over the pond. Five common areas are indicated on the plat, one north and east of the pond, one south of the access road, two bordering the access road on the south, and one along the north western edge of the property. This phase will be served by a continuation of Lakewood Hill Drive. This public road will have a temporary cul-de-sac terminating near the southeast edge of the pond, which will eventually extend across to the TVA easement to the future Oaks phases of Oxford Commons. I believe two of those phases have already been approved, or been preliminary platting, so. Engineering provided comments related to access and streets, water and sewer utility and stormwater, and noted a good bit of language that needs to be included on the plat, and staff recommends approval of the request of final plat for the Preserve Phase Five at Oxford Commons with the 10 conditions that are listed in the staff report. And the applicant's engineer is on the line if he'll have any questions.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions from the commission? I have one for Rihanna. There are a lot of conditions in the engineering section, but you feel like all of those can be handled adequately with the staff conditions?
I do, and we did receive that resubmital this afternoon that I believe the engineer feels like has addressed all of our engineering comments, so I think that it's quite possible that as we speak, everything has been addressed for engineering, but I just, we've not had a chance to review it yet.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Would anyone from the audience like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name's Dick Dickerson, and I live in Oxford Commons, and I live on Lakewood Hill Drive. And I'm here really to just get some clarification on some of these items. In the preliminary case, for preliminary plat approval, this case 2562, there were four other elements of compliance that were not addressed in this final plat approval. Those concern the PUD planned data table, compliance with the tree preservation agreement, requiring dedication 20% of the land area of the subdivision, update on the approved tracking spreadsheet, partly for tree mitigation, and presentation to the city of an option to purchase or an offer to dedicate to the city and the property. And I'm wondering if those have been addressed, if those have been completed?
Robert, have you been?
Yeah, this is Paul Cuschenina. I couldn't attend in person this evening, I apologize, but I'm not sure if we provided an updated PUD planned data table, although we can do that. All of this phase of the Preserve is well within the density requirements of the PUD. In fact, we're, I think we have fewer lots than what the original preliminary plat approval showed, which was also well within the requirements of the PUD. So that's easy to provide, we can do that prior to the board hearing the final plat request. The tree mitigation has been fully addressed. In fact, there's a surplus of land that's already been set aside, so that has been satisfied for this phase, and as I said, there's a surplus of tree mitigation credit available that's already been set aside in previous phase approvals for this overall Oxford Commons development, so I'm not sure what the other items were.
There's one about the conservation space.
Right, that's what I'm speaking to that's been, that has been addressed, and actually there's a surplus that exceeds what is required for what's already been approved, including Preserve Phase Five.
Was there a specific concern about the planned data table? Because most of the discussion in the past has been about commercial space and not residential?
No. Not really the planned data table.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know that we've received a, you know, an option to purchase, offer to the city of Oxford, but I mean, that would be something that we would take, and Paul Watkins may want to step in here and address that, but that would be something that would go before the board for consideration. I don't know that the city has any interest in acquiring any of the area for mitigation.
Yeah, I was not aware that that was part of the conservation. We've worked with David's attorneys to make sure that the appropriate areas have been set aside. I don't think the city has ever expressed any interest in acquiring any of that, but there is a continuing, as the area gets developed, we have put it, put the appropriate percentage in, I don't remember exactly, Ben, you might be able to help me here, it was a little less than 20%. Yeah, I think that number's actually 15%. Yeah. And as we have gone, and in fact, I think the developer has advanced certain areas to put that in the conservation easement, so we've worked with them on that, but I don't think that the city acquiring it was ever part of the deal.
Thank you, Paul.
It's in the proposal, the case number, that that would be something that would be addressed, so, just making it all...
I think the intent was to allow that to be in the conversation if needed, but as Paul Watkins just said, there's been no expressive interest from the city of Oxford to purchase any of that area. Yeah, I think the city is a named beneficiary of these conservation easements, so that may be what we're talking about here. I mean, but they are, every dedication in these conservation easements is in perpetuity, and the city is a beneficiary of those, so the city doesn't take maintenance of those, but it is required to be kept in conservation area in perpetuity.
Mr. Dickerson, are you referring to condition seven, that there's a large amount of common area shown? Who will own it, and how will it be managed?
I'm looking at the case number previous for the preliminary plat.
Yeah, I'm looking at preliminary plat approval, case number 2562 from November 7, 2019.
Right, on page two.
Page two.
Other elements of compliance?
Yeah.
Sometimes things get, don't get done if they're not done when they're supposed to be done, not saying that that would be the case here, but I think if that was one of the elements of compliance, or several elements, they should be complied with.
Yeah, so I think of these, the planned data table, we agree, is not an issue at this point. The tree preservation has been addressed, the tracking spreadsheet is being maintained by planning, is that right?
Yeah, it is. It can't be updated until this is already approved and then, you know, recorded, so we continue to work on it, although the areas have already been accounted for, and they're at fault as they're given a circular at this time.
Yeah, and I think functionally, the option for the city to acquire the land has been satisfied, since the city's not interested.
Okay. Would like to mention that on this case, on page one, second paragraph in planning comments, it says that the pond area will serve as a recreational asset for other portions of Oxford Commons, and will include passive recreational space and a walking trail. Members of the homeowners association at Oxford Commons were told at our meeting in February that only the landowners of the lots in this phase would be allowed to use the pond, the lake, actually, and I don't know which rules. I mean, we've only been told that, I haven't seen anything in writing, and that was from David Blackburn. So I do, I am concerned about that, if it is supposed to be for all areas of Oxford Commons, an asset for everybody, then I think it should be stated.
Well, one question I'd have that addresses that, may not be the only way to address it, Paul Cuschenina, the common areas around the lake, how are those going to be administered? Is it the larger PUD, or is it just this platted area that's going to have ownership of the common areas?
Excuse me, yeah, my understanding is that the common areas indicated on this Preserve Phase Five plat are limited common areas that are intended to be owned and maintained by the ownership of the lots within Preserve Phase Five and for their use. That's my understanding, but I can certainly get clarification on that.
I've got a question, either from Paul Cuschenina, or Ben, or Paul Watkins, but it's my memory that I had a question about these conservation areas, and the discussion was that we look at the conservation areas over the entire PUD, right? And I hadn't thought about it till you said that, but if the conservation areas, if we're looking at them for the entire PUD, shouldn't all the owners of different phases of the development have access to it? If we're going to, you know, grant some, you know, if we're shifting around the conservation area throughout the entire PUD, and allowing to, you know, build more lots here and not have conservation area, is that something that's even within our control?
I mean, Kirk, there, not all of the conservation areas are accessible areas though, too, you know, some of them are in, you know, behind lots, and so there's not necessarily, you know, areas for them, for people to, you know, to access them.
Access, okay.
I mean, you know, the whole point of the conservation areas was to set aside or dedicate some areas, you know, as part of a variance that was granted by the planning commission, you know, by the planning commission from the tree mitigation requirements and supported by the tree board, and they agreed, the developers agreed to set aside the 14% in conservation that way, those would be preserved as trees. Now, if what you're talking about is common open space within, you know, within the PUD, I mean, I think that that would be, you know, up to...
There's a difference.
That's right, and there is a difference between the conservation areas and the common open space, and so, you know, that might be some, you know, discussion, further discussion between the developer and the homeowners association.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of getting at, that's not within our purview.
Sure.
Okay. That was not part of the variance that was granted, Kirk, I mean, that was what the city was going for, and I think what the planning commission was looking at at the time that it granted that, to set aside that 14 or 15%, was to make sure that there were undeveloped areas that remained green space. Accessibility, and who has access to, you know, which phases can, you know, cross over, whatever, is, that's really a thing that's going to have to be up to the homeowners.
Okay.
So my question is, who will own the common areas, the conservation areas, the common areas, because in most, all the other common areas, it's owned by the homeowners association, which it's not distinguished between some homeowners or all the homeowners, and it addresses in this as well that the owners will have, own a proportionate share, but my D doesn't have anything concerning ownership of a proportionate share of common areas.
So I'm not sure if this is a question for Paul Watkins or engineering or who?
Yeah, I think we're sort of conflating a couple of different things here. Again, the question of who owns the common area and who has access to that is separate and apart from the setting aside of the conservation area. I don't have the easements in front of me, but we have reviewed multiple conservation easements that the development entity has dedicated in the name of the city and in favor of the city, and so those areas can't be developed per the terms of the conservation easements. As far as, you know, who has rights and ownership to the common area, that's really an HOA issue.
Right, and I think his question is, is this plat going to be a separate HOA from the rest of the PUD, because I think what Mr. Dickerson's saying is that his HOA doesn't seem to have any part of this, but that the description of the plat says that it'll be held in common by the residents.
I would point out on the final plat map, the common areas, some of the common areas are distinguished as being limited common area, and in the same area, conservation area, but they're not distinguished, it doesn't show which is which, and are you, and that even goes for the comments on the paper, on the lake. You've got limited common area of, I think that's 13 acres, conservation area, 9.16 acres, which is the lake itself, but how do you, how do you know which is which?
Well, I think the other question for Paul Cuschenina, I'm going to take a stab. I think limited common area means that it's limited to this plat, and conservation area applies to the whole PUD, but I don't know if that's true or not. Paul?
Yes, that's exactly accurate.
Also, on this plat, the areas that are marked in dark gray seem to be the conservation areas, whereas the areas that are marked in meets and bounds look to be the limited common areas, and they kind of overlap.
That is also correct.
So I'm afraid that it's within the developer's purview to decide how to chop up HOAs and decide who gets access to what, that's not really ours to decide.
One of the recommendations by the planning staff is that a copy of the comments should be submitted to the staff for review and comment, and a stamped and recorded copy of the covenants will be required before signing of the final plat. Do we know if that's been done?
The final plat approval is actually a board action, Board of Aldermen. This is a recommending committee here for subdivision plats. Until we go to the Board of Aldermen meeting, we cannot sign the plats, but at that time, we will record the covenants that are required.
Number four on that is updating complete set of the site plans will be submitted before the signing of the final plat. Have those been done?
We provided an updated plat today to Rihanna's office and to Ben, and again, the plat cannot be signed until after the Board of Aldermen votes for approval, assuming they do, and that's not until next Tuesday, and then after that, we can sign and record the plats, and at that time, those documents will be provided. The updated plat has already been provided.
So I think part of it is that easement for the footpath, public footpath, walking trail, has been specifically labeled on the plat, so that's been done?
Yes. Any other questions?
Yes, excuse me for a moment. In the case, it refers to, I believe it's page three, the second paragraph, it says the common property area parcels ad valorem tax value shall be assessed to each lot owner on a pro rata basis. What does that mean?
It means that the portion of the common areas that each of the property owners is responsible for will be part of their tax burden.
So is built through the county or through the city, that portion of the ad valorem tax? I didn't know what a tax value was, so...
It's just a type of tax value.
Excuse my ignorance.
No problem. Anything else we can help with?
I would like to point out that I believe it was the water line that was extended from Lakewood Hill Drive, it terminated at the previous phase. It's probably 120 feet long, and it's still gravel, loose gravel, has not been repaved, and I think I mentioned something to Rihanna about this several weeks ago, so my wife had a bicycle accident, fell on that area, and we'd sure like to get that fixed as soon as possible.
What's the status of that? Is it still private, or is it city? Rihanna?
The street is still private. We're in the process of finalizing construction and coordinating with Rihanna's office to perform...
perform final inspections, and those all have to occur before we go to the Board of Aldermen. And that very well may not happen by a week from tomorrow, which is the next Board of Aldermen date, but we understand that and we're working toward completing those items. And the developer, David Blackburn, fully understands that. Contractors in the process of finalizing construction. So the streets are private as we speak.
Thank you, Paul.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number 2869 for final plat approval for the preserved Phase Five. I have a motion to approve, subject to the listed conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, the final plat is approved. Our next case is a public hearing for case number 2877. Josh White has filed a request for preliminary and final plat approval for 1309 North Lamar Subdivision for property located at 1309 North Lamar. Please let the record show the Commissioner Mylan is recusing himself.
Yeah, this piece of property is the former location of Lamar Lounge or Gus's Chicken. It's located in North Lamar and at the intersection of North Lamar, Cincinnati Boulevard. It's about 1.12 acres. Applicants proposing a subdivision here that will create two lots, that will create a lot around Lot One, which is the Lamar Lounge and Gus's Fried Chicken or the old, the old building there. It measures about .71 acres. And then Lot Two is actually further to the rear of the property, but it does front towards Cincinnati Boulevard and the Lamar. That will measure about point, just under half an acre in total. And so, so two lots here, there's no development being proposed on Lot Two at this time, nothing being modified on Lot One. Engineering provided comments related to access, to infrastructure, stormwater. We just wanna make sure that whenever a development proposal is presented, then stormwater detention will be required on Lot Two. A bond for water sewer sidewalk, streetlights will be required before the case is heard by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen. And construction plans indicating how that infrastructure will be provided will also be needed as well. So, staff recommends approval of this request for a two-lot subdivision with the noted conditions in the staff report.
Thank you, Ben. I just have one question about the, the infrastructure for sewer and water. Paul, this lot is, isn't it significantly uphill from the rest of the Lamar and kind of all by itself? Do you think that presents any unique challenges for trying to provide those utility?
Well, actually, the portion that's being carved out of the overall existing tract is really down low, quite a bit below the existing structure and parking that used to be Lamar Lounge and Gus's Fried Chicken. Right, and that's actually the very reason that they're dividing this. That's really, the property as a whole is not really realistic to work together, so they're kinda chopping off the rear area that's down low. And in fact, that area that's indicated as Lot Two is adjacent to the road level of the existing street that feeds into the Lamar. So, that was really the logic that kinda prompted the owner to proceed with this request to divide the lot.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions from the commission? Anyone from the audience who should speak? All right, then I'll entertain a motion on case number 2877, request for preliminary and final plat approval for 1309 North Lamar.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Subject to the staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Will someone retrieve Commissioner Mylan, please? Our next case, please let the record show the Commissioner Mylan has returned. Next case is case number 2878, Dermatology Associates of Oxford LLC has filed a request for site plan approval for Dermatology Associates of Oxford for property located at 1626 Highway 30.
Okay, the subject property is the second development on Lot Seven of the Leslie Court PUD. Applicant is proposing to construct about a 12,000 square foot medical facility that'll be the new location for Dermatology Associates. Additional spaces set aside for potential future building expansion of about 1,800 square feet. Lot Seven of Leslie Court PUD is part of Area One inside the PUD plan, which is indicated to follow the T and B district regulations, except that only 25% of the buildings need to meet the secondary requirement. This particular building does meet the secondary requirement of T and B anyway, so not a problem. For use and parking requirements, medical facilities of less than 25,000 square feet are special uses in T and B districts, and this proposal meets all the other additional standards for medical facilities. And parking standards is one space for each 250 square feet of gross floor area. 49 spaces are required and 61 provided, which is within the 125% maximum. And the additional 12 spaces should be enough to cover that potential expansion. For coverage and setbacks, uses in the T and B district are allowed 80% lot coverage, and this use will bring the total coverage of Lot Seven to 25.3%. Only relevant setback for this particular project would be the front build two of zero to 60 foot and the rear setback of 25 foot, and this proposal meets both of those requirements. For landscaping and tree mitigation, the landscape design meets all standards related to ed buffers and foundation plantings. Fronted trees are shown on the plan and were approved as part of the Leslie Court subdivision. There are two bay magnolias that are shown as parking lot trees, and those will need to be replaced with trees selected from the preferred parking lot canopy tree list. Tree mitigation for this was handled at the time of the Leslie Court subdivision. No HVAC or other rooftop mounted equipment is indicated on the plans, however, any such equipment in the future must be fully screened by a parapet wall. For building materials, the architectural elevations indicate primarily stucco material with cast stone and architectural metal panels as secondary materials. And any signage will require a separate approval outside of the site plan. Engineering has provided comments related to water and sewer, traffic and access, sidewalks, and stormwater management. And staff recommends approval of the request of site plan for Oxford Dermatology Associates with the two conditions that are listed in the staff report.
I believe that the engineer is on the line? Okay, thanks, Robert. Are there any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on public hearing for case number 2878, Dermatology Associates of Oxford for site plan approval.
A motion to approve with the conditions listed.
I have a motion to approve, subject to the listed conditions, is there a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, the site plan is approved. Our next case is case number 2879, Updraft Investments LLC has filed a request for site plan approval for the Lamar Phase One amended for property at the Lamar T and B near Stewart Street.
Okay, this subject property is in the Lamar T and B and what was previously referred to as Phases One and Five. This is an amendment to a now expired site plan that passed in August of 2017. This particular phase will contain about four and a half acres of the total 48-acre site. The proposed site plan is for five buildings, one that fronts on North Lamar, two that front on a yet-to-be-named main private commercial road, one that fronts on an interior road, and one building that will front on an extension of Baldwin Drive. The site plan indicates a total of 32,250 square feet of building footprint and about 69,000 square feet of occupied area. Buildings One, Two, and Three are two stories tall, and Buildings Four and Five are three stories. The tallest building indicated is gonna be Building Five at 45 feet. Buildings One, Two, and Three will be fully commercial. Building Four will be mixed-use with ground floor commercial, and Building Five will be fully multifamily residential with podium parking on the first floor. There are 54 residential units proposed in Buildings Four and Five, and retail uses are expected for all floors of Buildings One, Two, and Three and the ground floor of Building Four, totaling about 32,000 square feet. Parking requirements for T and Bs are outlined in section 2.6.1310. Essentially, parking, minimum parking requirements are to serve as a guide and aren't to be, you know, strictly applied. Maximum number of parking spaces for non-residential uses in a mixed-use structure shall be no more than 80% of the standard requirement, and the minimum shall be no less than 60%. And the residential standards will remain the same. So, 114 parking spaces are acquired by code for the residential units, and 111 spaces are required for the 32,000 square feet of retail space. Applicant in total proposes 210 total spaces, which is 100% of the required residential, 80% of the required non-residential, and seven additional spaces for future shared non-residential for future phases. Staff finds that to be an acceptable proposal. Tree mitigation is required for portions of this phase. So, previous to a development code change in 2019, T and Bs were exempt, so considerable amount of Lamar was graded. So the areas that were not graded and trees removed are still, are now subject to tree mitigation standards. For this particular phase, seven two-inch caliber mitigation trees are gonna be required, and the trees are indicated on the site as sweet bay magnolias, but aren't specifically called out, and that will be, need to be changed on the plans. The applicant has provided a landscaping package that includes foundation plantings, edge plantings, and parking lot trees. Street trees along the small stretch of North Lamar as well as the parking lot tree is not gonna be indicated, as there is a geogrid grassing area along North Lamar and on the main commercial drive that will allow for fire access to the east sides of Building One and Two. Architectural elevations have been provided for all buildings, and the buildings are indicated to have primarily brick veneer exteriors with wood windows and metal balconies. Engineering has provided comments to sewer and water service, access streets and roads, sidewalks, retaining walls, and stormwater management. And staff recommends approval of the request of site plan for Lamar Phase One amended with the nine conditions that are listed in the staff report. And the applicant's engineer is here and Rihanna is on line if you have any questions about the engineering report.
Thanks, Robert. Mr. Cardwell, if you could. Rihanna, since there is a lot here on the engineering comments, could you just walk us through quickly, I guess, in particular on the stormwater, because there was a basin missing and there were some conditions there, and they still need a management plan? And let us know if there are any updates.
Yes, absolutely. So, the stormwater management plan is, it's all, it's a common requirement that you see on cases, because it's not typically something that we have at the time. That is the maintenance plan. And so, we, we have yet to develop even a template. We've received some as engineers have kinda developed their own, but that is something that is, is not unusual for us not to have the management plan in place at this point in time. Regarding the, the detention basin, the, there was a discrepancy, there was, I think there was a layer of the stormwater that was turned off, and Shane can probably speak to that better, in the plans that we reviewed, but we had a tabletop meeting, and I say tabletop, Shane physically brought full-scale plans, and we went through our questions and kinda reviewed the plans in person. And he showed us on the plans where these items were. So, there, that's, that's where that's at. So it's in the June plans, and Shane can speak specifically to this, but we were, we were reviewing the original submittal, because we had not provided comments off that original submittal yet. So, we saw the detention basin in the, in the June plans that we looked at in our meeting, at our tabletop meeting. I'm not sure if that underpinned that.
So that, that was...
Does that make sense?
At least in the tabletop meeting, but...
Yes, yes. And since then, there's been a, there's been a, an online submittal of the plans as well. We have not had an opportunity to go through all of those, and so that's why we noted that we've got comments from both, we've got comments from our, from the April physical, digital set that we had and from the tabletop, they're kind of meshed together.
And then...
But we think stormwater is addressed.
One other question about the traffic study needing to be updated. There was a comment that the study will need to be updated with each phase, so does that apply to phases, I guess, One and Three that are up for tonight?
Phase, it does not apply to Phase One at all. That, so Phase One was addressed in the original traffic impact study. It specifically addressed Phases One and Two and how those would, would need to be, and what we were looking at was when that traffic signal would be brought online. I need to look, and I would like permission for me to look in the study to see about Phase Three, when we get to that case. We can talk about it more, I guess, or we can talk about it now, actually, to see the impacts about the, the signal being installed, like the timing for that. However, that signal is included as part of the TIP agreement that the developer has with the city, and so I think that that would also be brought on. We haven't discussed with the developer about his exact timing of when he plans to bring that signal online, and Shane may have information about that, I don't know. But, so Phase Three, I've got to look, we don't have that updated, and we were later in getting them a response to comments, so that was not something that they had opportunity to address before the meeting, to have that study updated. So, we would like to look at it and see, as y'all remember from previous large developments, these studies, a lot of times, they'll provide all of the recommendations at one time and say, here's everything that we think we'll need when it's all fully developed, but they don't always have a, they don't always have all of the limits of, you know, when you get to this many units occupied, you need to have these items. The last update that we had, identified phases wanted to, but I need to look, because Phase Three is kind of in Phase One area and a little bit of it's not. So, trying to determine exactly how many units we think that traffic study would have covered, I need to look at.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
I have a question about number nine, the sediment not being finished from last time and grassed within 30 days. How do we do that? Does somebody from the city go out there on day 30 from now and say, yeah, it's good, you can keep working, or no, everybody has to stop?
If, if that condition is improved, that is how we'll, we'll, we'll do it. And I think that, I'm gonna speak for Shane, but I think the engineer will also be involved in that and helping, you know, make sure that that work is progressing. But we will, we will do that, and we will involve code enforcement as well if there's, if there is a need to issue a stop work order. The erosion aspect of it is also handled through our building department leg of development services, so we would all kinda coordinate in that together. But it would be just a, a mark on a calendar that we would go and look. And it may already, we, since we met, they may have already started the grassing. Shane can give an update on that. I know that was all in the works when we were talking last week.
That's correct. The footprint of the basin was initially constructed when the mass grading plan took effect. It was not completed, permanent grassing has not been established, but that, that basin, that stormwater sediment basin, and it actually serves as a detention basin as well. It's part of the stormwater management plan for the entire development, including this Phase One amended site plan and the Phase Three site plan. So it, it will be finished as part of these two. Phase Three site plan. So it, it, it will be finished as part of, of these two.
Other question?
Yeah. The, um, real fast, the cast-in-place concrete retaining walls, it says, see the grading plan for the heights, but I can't find them. How, how high are these cast-in-place retaining walls gonna be?
They're, the tallest one is twelve. Well, some of them are gonna be integral with the founda, the building foundation plans, but the tallest one is twelve feet. The one, um, on the south side of the, of the, of the site, uh, where the parking area is and the dumpster enclosure, I think the tallest portion of it is only eight feet. But there's some sections that, that, uh, that are behind the, the buildings that front on Main Street that are, uh, that are as high as twelve feet.
Out of curiosity, do those have, uh, rebar inside of them, or are they just...
They will. They'll be cast-in-place concrete with, uh, uh, more than likely a brick veneer finish that, that's gonna match the, the architectural scheme of the, of the buildings in the phase, so.
Do we not have to have, you can't, that's too tall, and that's without doing nothing?
And we do provide the separation between stacked retaining walls, uh, as well. The minimum of ten feet between stacked retaining walls, and we, we provide that as well. And we are updating the grading plan to, to place spot elevations, top and bottom elevations on the actual grading plan, and also provide, uh, retaining wall profiles of, of each of these walls. Those were provided in the, in the Phase Three submittal, but not this Phase One amended packet. But we're, we will provide that to engineering, uh, before land disturbance permits are, are requested.
Perfect. Thank you. Other question?
Just one quick, the, the condition of construction plan for widening North Lamar. I, I couldn't really see where that was on the, on the plan, or, or not positive where it was on the, on the plan.
We're gonna provide that detailed information for Rihanna. Basically, the, the original Phase One site plan, we were gonna provide the widening of North Lamar as part of that development. We didn't provide particular typical sections for that, for those improvements. Uh, and, and I basically just assumed that that original level of detail would suffice. But she has requested those and will, we will be providing those to her.
Okay.
And also, sheet nine does show that turn lane, um, there's gonna be a turn lane coming in to the development. Um, that shows part of it, so you can kind of get an idea of the intersection layout there.
Okay, yeah. And that's, that's what I thought it was. I just didn't, didn't know what, what you were talking about, or what planning was talking about there.
If I recall correctly from the original traffic impact study, I think Phase One, or any development after Phase One, was gonna require that the, that the widening be performed and the turn lane be provided. I don't think the traffic signal, the light itself, is required until full build, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, we haven't discussed with, with, with the owner, the timeline for installing the traffic signal. But we do intend to do the widening as part of this Phase One amended plan and the, and the Phase Three site plan. So that, the turn, the turn lane will be, uh, constructed as part of this site plan infrastructure, but the actual traffic signal will be installed at a later date.
Any final questions from the commission? Anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right. Hearing no further comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight seventy-nine, request for site plan approval for the Lamar Phase One amended.
Uh, I, I'll move to approve, subject to the conditions stated.
There is a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Site plan is approved. Our final case is case number twenty-eight eighty. Updraft Investments LLC has filed a request for site plan approval for the Lamar Phase Three for property at the Lamar T and D near Hilltop Drive.
So Phase Three is about a five-acre piece of property just, uh, north of where we were just discussing. Uh, still has frontage along Main Street. Um, the applicant is proposing five buildings, Buildings Six through Ten, uh, three of them that front towards the Main Street, and two buildings that front towards, uh, Catstone Drive. Uh, the plan indicates a total of, uh, just under fifteen thousand square feet of, uh, footprint, building footprint, and thirty thousand square feet of occupied area. Uh, all five buildings will be two stories. Uh, Buildings Six and Seven will contain ground floor commercial with residential dwellings on the second floor, while the remaining three buildings will be a mix of retail, commercial on the ground floor with office space on the second floor. Um, Robert laid out the, uh, parking requirements within the T and D. Uh, this applicant, uh, I'm sorry, this proposal does, uh, comply with the parking requirements. They're providing a hundred and seven total spaces, um, which fits within those guidelines that, um, uh, he previously mentioned. Additionally, this area was, uh, previously, um, um, part of the, um, tree mitigation, where, where it was exempt from tree mitigation, uh, that subsequently has been, uh, been changed in the code. Um, but there are no mitigation, uh, trees required to be planted in this particular phase. Um, the applicant did provide a landscaping package that complies with the requirements for foundation planting, um, edge plantings, parking lot trees. Uh, in, in addition to that, they did provide, uh, trees along Main Street and, uh, and Catstone. Um, architectural elevations have been provided for all the buildings. They do comply with the requirements for the building materials. They're gonna be primarily, primarily brick veneer exteriors with some scored stucco on the front facade, wood window shutters and metal balconies. Uh, the elevations do not indicate any rooftop mounted equipment, but should they be considered in the future, then they're gonna be required to be screened as what's required in our code. Uh, engineering did provide comments related to sewer and water service, access streets and roads, sidewalks, retaining walls, and stormwater management. And, uh, therefore, staff recommends approval of the Lamar Phase Three with the ten noted conditions in the staff report.
Thank you, Ben. Do we have an update on the depth of the manholes?
I believe we had two manholes that were over twelve feet deep. We are gonna revise those to, to reduce those depths. Uh, I don't think that's reflected on the, on the drawings that you have in your packet, but yes, we will, um, address that.
All right. Any other questions? Rihanna, anything, any comments from engineering that you want to share?
No, no additional comments.
All right. Anybody from the audience wish to speak? All right. I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight eighty, request for site plan approval for the Lamar Phase Three. I have a motion to approve, subject to listed conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor? It is approved. Um, I'll entertain, unless there's any more business to come before the commission, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?